It's 6:06. It took me five minutes longer than I planned to get here, so I think we can stop the meeting without upsetting anybody. Uh, this is our regular monthly meeting, so we do have a little business before we get to the public hearing. So I'll start by opening the meeting.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Yeah.
Commissioner Steele?
Here.
Commissioner White?
Here.
Commissioner Van?
Here.
Also present myself, City Clerk of recent warrant, and child management, city body manager, planning administrator.
This is going to be approval of the February meeting minutes. Anybody can come with me. Motion to approve. Make a motion to approve February eight minutes as I get that. It's approved. So, uh, next order of business is going to be the public hearing. Um, let's take a couple minutes and just sort of talk about what is happening here. And first, I'd like to say thanks for coming out tonight. Um, to confirm, just so we're all in the right place, this is not a meeting about the airport. That's in the county. We're talking about the city tonight. So that's where we're here for. So we don't need anything about airports or any of that kind of stuff. We want to have a nice, smooth, quick meeting. Uh, it's also important for reframing of applause for interrupting any of the presentations or the testimony. It's part of holding a good hearing is giving everyone their opportunity to speak as well as be heard. So we have received a end review, a large number of letters and emails regarding them. And they are now part of the public record for tonight's hearing. Any of the written statements you received touched on the same themes. Many of you took the time to go ahead and cut and paste a large portion of Fremont County code into the letter. So thanks for that. And, uh, for future reference, just for everybody that submitted that, I would really like to say the most influential and helpful comments are thoughtful, uh, they're well-written, they're clear, they're concise, and they speak to the issue that we have to hear from. So, you know, just for everyone's notice in the future, having to read through lots of code and things like that, it just takes up a lot of time. And you might have something important that you want to say that we get lost in. So just a little bit of my thoughts. So we're going to open up the hearing tonight with a presentation from Powell, Staff Report. Uh, he's our Planning and Zoning Administrator. After that, we will hear from the applicant. And after that, we will open the hearing to public testimony. Public testimony will only be submitted from those people who have signed up to speak. So if you have not signed up to speak, I believe we can, we still get you on there, but you need to do that before we get, uh, you'll be given three minutes to speak. And some people will be called in the following order. First, we hear from those in favor. And after that, we hear from anybody that might have even decided perhaps has a question, and then we'll finish up with those opposed. And from your reading your written testimony, it's also clear there's a lot of passion around this application, which is really exciting. There's been us sitting up here that you'd even like to care. That's great. Um, but we do need to keep the testimony to the facts relevant to this application. And this is an application for a zone change, not an application for a resort, for a hotel, or a camping destination, or a strip mall. We have nothing like that. Um, decisions of form will be based on the facts pertinent to the application. And to make sure we can hear all the testimony, please keep it, how it's focused and bring new, but you're certainly more than welcome to agree or support something that's been said already. We do not need to hear it again. So feel free to help us kind of move through this quickly, give everybody a chance to speak. Those getting testimony only get to speak once. Any questions you may have should be addressed in the testimony. There's no questions we can take after. Once all the, all of them sign up to give testimony and spoken, uh, the applicant will be permitted to speak to any of the things that were brought up by you guys. The new testimony, the more presentations, but we'll address any questions that were brought up. And for that, then return to the commission. You'll have an opportunity to ask some questions, leave the testimony as well as his response. Uh, once that's done, the hearing will be closed. No further testimony will be taken. At that point, we will deliberate amongst ourselves, you know, right, right here, and work on a recommendation. There's a recommendation to the city council. So we made some recommendations based on everything we've been here today. Um, and at that point, we will either have that recommendation. In the event that we need some more time, there's a possibility to maintain this until our next. And, um, without further ado, so open up this public hearing. In this sort of like, um... Uh, thank you, Chair President and Commissioners. Thank you, everybody. Shout out. You hear me now? Is that better? Um, thank you, everybody, for being here. It's really nice to see you. This kind of turnout is rare. So thank you. Um, what we have tonight is an application for a zone. Uh, Lynn Burton Shaw is our applicant. He'll speak later. Um, I'm going to remove over the map so we can all see. Can everybody see this? So this is... Property right here. It's kind of, it's hard to see. It's outlined in the... This is Highway 20. This right here is the Sawtelle Peak Road. And this is Old Highway 191 right here. So the property is situated right between Old Highway 191 and Highway 20. Um, these lines here, this one here and this one here are the city line. So everything here is in the county. Here is also in the city. This basically is here. Currently, um, this piece is zone rural base. That's a county zone. And there, it is surrounded by rural base on both sides. Um, as far as the city zoning goes, um, the piece that is also owned by Mr. Burton Shaw is, is zone residential, is by residential. There's some commercial down in here. And rural, that is, um, there. Um, so that is basically what we're looking at. The piece is currently being used as a... And then the piece, the, the annexation is sixty, flip it over to sixty and a half acres.
Right up to your mouth.
Can we just put it in my mouth? I apologize. Uh, the piece is, is just over sixty and a half acres. So the piece requested to be that. Requested to be added. And with that, any questions for me? Thank you.
My name's Justin Hamilton. I'm representing Ensign and Ensign Hospitality along with Mr. Burton Shaw. And, uh, we're here to speak on behalf of the request, and we want to thank you for the opportunity we have to speak. We've also had opportunities to review the comments and the letters and to, uh, to be able to have an opportunity to talk a little bit about this request this evening. First and foremost is, uh, we just want to establish, as is the letter said, is that this isn't associated with the airport. This is a completely separate parcel and a completely separate part. Um, as well as we're Idahoans. I grew up in Eastern Idaho. Um, I, my family ran skin, kill war, and last chance. And uh, I've had a chance to get involved with Ensign throughout the time as we've grown. And I've watched Island Park change a lot in the last thirty-five years as I've been coming up here as well. And in lots of different aspects and in lots of different roles, both as someone who enjoys Island Park, someone who's used it for recreation as well as a business. And, uh, the opportunity to be able to come before you tonight is, uh, is a pretty special thing because I think we know what Island Park has and what it can become. And, and kind of reference to the comprehensive plan is, is what's referenced is that a big part of what Island Park is and what it always has been is, is tourism. And tourism and real estate are eighty-nine percent of the economy of what drives these up here. And as such, with that eighty-nine percent is important with the comprehensive plan is that good choices are made as we continue to grow, to recognize and preserve what Island Park City is and where the direction. Um, understanding and having a great love for this area, it is our goal to protect and to really maintain the vision of Island Park. And everything that we do, we want to make sure that that's in alliance with those things as well. As part of, of a lot of the letters that came through, we know that there was a lot of, um, concerns that were raised and I'm sure will be re-raised tonight in regards to, uh, the wetlands in the area of the request of the annexation, as well as wildlife, uh, impacts on wildlife, as well as, uh, impacts with roads and winter, winter facilities and those things. And, uh, and working up for this request tonight, that is the, what we have done up to this point. Uh, we have worked with the Idaho Fishing Game with, uh, Tim Squaredge and to work on the animals to understand a little bit about what the migration patterns are, what happens in the flats, to be able to make sure that that's respected and is a part of whatever development takes place with, whatever the zoning might be with this as well. We also have worked to have wetland studies already been performed on this piece of property. So we know and understand the wetlands and they will be respected and those will be not only respected but improved and will be respected forever. Um, we also understand and realize that recreation's a big part of this property as well. And I know another big concern has been with the back road with snowmobile trails, the county trails. And, uh, we realized that that's a huge part of our winter tourism. And to, to protect that, to be able to have that be honored is another big. And, uh, we've worked with Idaho Department of Transportation in regards to understanding the winter roads, um, regards to snowgates and a lot of impacts that these things have been done. And a lot of conversations and multiple meetings have been had with Department of Transportation as well. And our goal with this and, and the request that's been made tonight is to work with the community, not against the community. And I think a lot of the concerns that have been raised are valid. And our hopes is that we can have good conversations as developments move forward and that at this point, there is no application for what will be done, but what at that time comes and whenever that is necessary. And having public meetings or open forums or whatever needs to be happened to be able to make sure that just as the comprehensive plan is made, that it's good, smart growth that protects, but also recognizes that growth is going to happen. And I think, uh, Mr. Burton Shaw is going to have a chance to kind of, as a rancher is to, to understand is that, that the best use of what the property has is maybe in ranching isn't there anymore. And so that's kind of is a juncture where he has to make the best decision moving forward of, of what's phase two for this generation of biz. Um, and lastly is, is, uh, we believe in the community and we believe the assets of what future development could be here could be a great asset for the community. And that's at the time of which design is done on this project is that will be a big part of what can be done, whether that includes facilities that can be used for community activities and entertainment, as well as for fairs or other things that are held. That's a big part of what we believe in. And I think that's how I've conducted business and we've conducted business is to involve the community as much as possible on the great asset that really does exist up here. Um, we've tried to post many activities and events and things to be able to give back and support the community, and that will never change. That will only be continued as whatever development has to happen here. We've all been lucky to live by a national park, and a national park is what really drives tourism. And we know that the best use of what direction we head in our economy is definitely going to be driven by the great asset. And I think COVID and, and what's happened in regards to the use of, of West Yellowstone and, and the entrance that comes there is, is what's going to direct our tourism for many more years to come. And I think in what we can develop and, and, and bring to the table is what's going to set Island Park to be a viable, great place to be for another hundred years from now. So I'm going to turn the time to Mr. Burton Shaw.
I just hope that he wouldn't do that. Um, I don't know what to tell you. I, I, when I go to the, I just came from the grocery store over there. And I was talking to the gal at the grocery store and she said, "I just moved in here three years ago and I had a, uh, dream that said that they were going to put an airport and a Walmart there on the flats." And I said, "Well, I hope they don't ever do a Walmart." But, uh, the airport, you know, that doesn't have anything to do with me. But I did sell that guy the property, so I guess I'm the guy you can throw the tomato at. The reason I sold the property is because I paid, we've been up here, my grandfather came up in nineteen ten. And then we started ranching up here. We've either leased or owned that property for all the fifty years. And that particular chunk of ground, over about sixty head, because you can't bring your cattle up here that are red cattle until fifteenth of June. They have what they call the DSA, which is the designated study, because the elk have brucellosis. And they shed brucellosis when they're calving and stuff like that. And even though the elk aren't calving up here on the flats because the snow is usually still too deep, it's still part of the designated study. So you can't bring cattle up here till the fifteenth of June. And so that limits my grazing seasons about three and a half, four weeks. Any, any other places where I graze, I start out the fifteenth of April. And I choose that time out here because I don't want to have to sit and lead those cattle over and over and run them through a chute, suck the blood out of them, send the blood to the state. The state spins the blood and then they tell you whether you've got brucellosis or something. It's very frustrating because it winds your cattle up and, um, you start having a fortions and stuff like that. So I just don't bring them. Um, that particular piece of ground with the state lease that I have right next to it on the west and the state lease I have on the south, I can run a total of sixty head of cattle. So that's about six thousand dollars a year is what that would produce if I was writing a piece of ground. Like I rent, um, uh, Rich Arms ground over on the other side. And I pay them guys a dollar a head a day, which is about forty cents more than the other people that are paying. But I pay more because I don't want to have to have people coming in and bidding against me all the time. I can just keep that ground every year and to me it's worth it. For good family, friends, and, and that's, so that's what we do. But I can't make a living on this place. Even though we owned that ranch, my dad owned it, he didn't feel like he could give it to me. And so he had a guy come in there and they bid that bridge, four and a half million dollars. I didn't want it to leave the family, so I traded half of my farm to, to make the down payment on that ranch, got it in my name, and I'm still making payments. I've got about, uh, fifteen more years of payments, a two hundred thousand a year, and I can produce six thousand dollars off of that one piece. So it's an alligator. And, and it's not, and I still would do it if it would make money. I would keep ranching, but I can't. About five years ago, four of my boys decided to come and wanted to ranch with us. You can't make the payments with four of them. So anyway, that was the impetus for starting to sell some of this ground to try to pay down my debt to get to the point where I can pay my boys and keep, keep these families' ranches and stuff. And so I'm keeping all the grazing ground around at the state leases and stuff like that and my other duty ground. But I can't make that. And I can make it work if I develop it. Now, I understand why some of you don't want to see that happen. Uh, like I said, we've been up here for a little over a hundred years before that. And not me, but my grandparents and my parents and myself, my brothers and, and sisters have all been up here working. And we still come here. This is where we come for all of our family reunions. Um, it's still a wonderful area, but it does pay as a rancher. And my feeling is, is that we, we develop this and make it into, um, something that is beautiful and something that is useful. Uh, I'm, I've been on the Idaho Cattlemen's Association. We have a problem in the state of Idaho. The only place you can go to have Idaho Cattlemen's meeting is in Sun Valley. Sun Valley hates cattlemen. We have to spend our dollars there because where do we have any place else for, for a convention center or anything like that? I would love to see something like that. The Idaho Cattlemen's, and I've had several people talk about things like that. They'd love to have a, a convention center up here where there's a, where they're close to the park and their fa, they can come and sit in their meetings and their families can go do things that they don't, that they don't want to be involved as well during the meetings. So I know that probably doesn't, um, help you, but that's part of the reason. I actually tried really hard. I tried for seven years to get the Nature Conservancy, Teton Land Trust, and the city of Island, Island Park to, to buy an easement on that thing so that I didn't have to develop it, so that I could pay some bills. And, and I spent seven years on it. And they never gave me nothing. They offered me, they offered me thirty-five, they offered me forty percent of thirty-five hundred fifty bucks a year to take all my rights away and, you know, preserve that. And, and I offered it Jeff Patl eventually, he was on the planning reserve, to, to get to the city, to, to try to stop that from being developed. They will do, but I can't make a living the way it is. So that's where we're, you know.
I'm Saint Anthony, I'm from Anthony. Um, I've been doing this work, uh, forty-seven years, local, state. One of the missing services, threefold, one, the annexation statute, which is not for you, but, you know, requires that if you send down, you know, for a conference of plan designation or policies and the zoning, what the legal notice you put out, put out does not talk about what the conference of plan is in the county or being in the city. So to me and my experience, it's a flawed public hearing. People that are here, the folks here tonight, if you need to go back and have a hunch, hearing on what the conference of plan designation is going to be. That's in fifty-two, two-two. Snap juice. It's also in sixty-seven, sixty-five, twenty-five, which is the local land's planning act. Very specific says that prior to annexation, I'll skip around here a little bit, prior annexation of unincorporated areas, a city shall request to receive a recommendation from the planning commission, um, as to the proposed plan, conference of plan, which is not near legal notice. There's a reference to a number of conferences. It doesn't say what it is in the county and what you want to recommend to the city council. So maybe intuitive, that's, they're asking for commercial, but your legal notice doesn't say that. That's the problem I've got. Both the annexation statute, local land's planning act say you have to hear that when you sound. Without a proposal with this, you not use the development agreement statute of local, local land's planning act to limit or restrict what commercial use can go in there. It can only be done, the development agreement by statute can only be done during the rezoning process. You can't use it later when a developer comes in with a plan. Questions?
Nicholas, Barry Phillips. Name is Barry Phillips. Fifty-four, twenty, Howard Creek Drive, Island Park. I've been a resident up there twenty-two years. Uh, since I was home, I was fifteen. I sat where you were sitting right now. I was sitting where John is, two years. While you have a little bit of knowledge, but I'm presuming that possibly with this rezoning, that in the future there might be some commercial wants, wanting to be there. When the county zoned this originally, out there where the cemetery and the service station are, if you'll notice on your map, that is not commercial. And that is not commercial because it was grandfathered in because it was there prior to the zoning. So they opted not because of what the flats are, because the flats have wildlife, the flats have a migration corridor in there. They are agricultural. They have a view area, which is very important to everybody who lives up there. That is why it's zoned rural right now. And if you take the opportunity to annex it and then in the future make it a commercial zone, you know, first of all, it's not adjacent to another commercial zone. There is a little bit of area there. But there was a reason in the city why it was not made a commercial zone. To go further, um, it's not a right area, but those of you who've lived here a long while, like I say, I've been here twenty-two years. I know a lot of people that live along the edge of Sawtelle. In the spring, their basements have standing marks. And that is exactly what happened there. Many times I've seen water gushing under the road right there where that piece of property is. That looks just like a river going out. And of course, it's all headed down Henry where it's going. So if there is an annexation, which I don't care if we annex it, but in the future, I would strongly discourage any commercialization of that area at all. The other thing, this is just a suggestion, just slightly off the subject, but with the permission of the mayor and the city council, I would strongly encourage you to gather a letter to send to the county commissioners and the county planning and zoning opposing the other facility out there that's being imposed right now. Thank you.
I have this being forty-one, forty-six, Huckleberry Lane, Island Park. Um, this development or any other development must meet the development code. I'm sure that you all know that. But, but just because it does meet the development code doesn't mean that you couldn't put restrictions on it. It, it is not the responsibility of the city to meet the developers' needs or change the code. Because it has been done once does not mean it has to be done again. What is in it for this community? Please don't tell me property taxes and don't tell me jobs. Right now, we can't find employees. There are plenty of both to go around. Why is it that our community and the city is always giving and never be and never receiving? Disappearing open space, not ask, not, um, developing parks, not developing playgrounds, congested roads due to not enough parking or stacking lane, Sawtelle Peak Road, lack of facilities for the community because visitors and part-time residents feel that it should be provided for them and not by them. Developments need to provide their increase of people, services, and in, and infrastructure. This use should be their responsibility and not the responsibility of the two hundred people in the city or the less than one thousand people in the Island Park area. Actually provide employee housing for their seasonal and full-time employees. Contribute to the GMS and fire district need. Conditions, conditions, conditions are needed to their permit to ensure future community contributions, contributions are assured, not just promised. Tonight, you heard a few promises. Those promises were also made for the Max Inn Motel. A lot of those promises now have been pulled back, are no longer happening. I'm sure many of the community organizations can tell you that. It is dreadful that the city has disregarded the Island Park It is dreadful that the city has disregarded the Island Park guide to commercial development in the city of Island Park. I do still have a copy of that, and I think Lisa has one if you need it. The Sand Patch Grocery Store, Allis Restaurant, the New Island Park Adventures, High Mountain Adventures, the Cabin Village, although unkeeping landscaping is needed, the Yellowstone Playhouse, to just name a few that fit the character of Island Park. I urge you to, once again, put the guide to Island Park, to the commercial development back into the post. Um, I have a lot, I have three pages, I put that on there. I again also would urge you to send a letter to Fremont County for the, for the air park, because it is in the area of impact city. Thank you.
You know, yes, Rob Danger, science and technology director at the Henry's Fork Foundation. I am representing the Henry's Fork Foundation, which is located, D.O. blocks five-five-zero in Ashburn. Most of you know, we're a conservation organization that, whose mission is to conserve and protect the fisheries of the Henry's Fork. So, we oppose the proposed action mostly because it makes more land available for commercial development, whatever the flavor of that commercial development may end up being. We're a science-based organization, we have generally stayed out of land use issues for the last ten or fifteen years, but our data, in this case, and data from some government agencies compelled us to comment based on concerns about water quantity, water quality. So regarding water quantity, water supply in the Henry's Fork watershed over the past twenty-three years is fifteen percent lower than it was in the previous twenty-three years. For context, that's equivalent to one and a half times the combined volume of Henry's Lake, Island Park Reservoir, and Drassy Lake. We have already documented fishery declines because of decreased water supply, and it's not just the Henry's Fork Foundation that thinks water supply is limited. The state of Idaho has recently enacted several administrative orders and even legislation just passed last week that greatly limit availability of water for all new and many existing junior water uses throughout the entire Snake River Basin upstream of Swan Falls. That's down near Boise, in case you're not familiar with where that is. And the only exception to those restrictions are single-dwelling domestic wells. Second, our data show that phosphorus concentrations in the Henry's Fork, both upstream and downstream of Island Park Reservoir have doubled in the past ten years. Further, a recently published study from U.S. Geological Survey found a steady decline in water quality in Island Park Reservoir over the last twenty-five years. The two wastewater treatment facilities in Island Park, Last Chance and Max Inn, are already in need of expansion and upgrade and cannot handle additional wastewater from commercial development. Any additional nutrient loading upstream of the reservoir is like a triple whammy, it degrades water quality in the river upstream of the reservoir, in the reservoir, and then that gets exported downstream. I can tell you that I hear from longtime anglers, their biggest concern about fishery in Henry's Fork is degradation of water quality between Island Park Dam and Pine Haven. So we conclude that additional burden on water supply and wastewater treatment facilities from an expanded commercial development will just continue to exacerbate the finds we're already seeing in water quantity, water quality, and fishery. Thank you.
Great. There.
I'm Janice Dare, with nine, four, eight, seven, nine, four, six, five, four, three, two, one. Right into it. No. Tell my buddy to.
It's very loud voice, I could just speak loudly. Very good one.
Hello? Yeah. I'm Janice Dare, I live at three-nine-oh-eight Rookie Lane in Island Park, a trip for wild, and I just wanted to say to the Burke and Dog Ranch, if you've heard of ranching, that plan, we have in keeping it wild and working, I think that's really important, we appreciate that, as your neighbors. But I'm opposed, okay, I'm opposed to the annexation and rezoning of property, and question, there's been a lot of development in Island Park, and I understand that we may have to have development here, that's the nature of things, but the Henry's Lake flats, the environment on those Henry Lakes flats is unique. It's a unique ecological value to animal, to migration, and to people up here, so on that basis, I'm opposed. That's all I have to say.
Something's Sunny Jay?
My name is Sunny Jay Wheeler. My family has lived year-round in Island Park for fifty years. Born and raised on the north shore of Henry's Lake, I'm a current year-round resident of Island Park. The decisions that you have before you will preserve the Island Park that we all love or change it forever. I want to thank the planning and zoning for your dedication to spending countless hours, many of them volunteered, to help Island Park, to keep Island Park protected. I oppose any development or rezoning of the Henry's Lake flats. I encourage everyone to read Fremont County Comprehensive Plan for future land development, which is defined on the website, and I respectfully know, or either of you here know this plan well. Seven out of twelve items are pertinent to this discussion, and I quote off the Fremont County's website, "When deciding for land development, to ensure that important environmental features are protected, to encourage protection of prime agricultural land, to encourage urban and urban-type development within incorporated cities, to avoid undue concentration of population and overcrowding of land, to ensure that the development on land is commensurate or in balance with the physical characteristics of the land, to provide wildlife and recreation resources, and to avoid undue water and air pollution." So, and I'm continuing to quote, "The goals and policies that drive a plan must be determined by the community and should reflect the values and visions of its residents. This vision, which is based on maintaining a sense of place and the elements that contribute for a quality of life, scenery, water, and space, fishing, wildlife, a relaxed pace of life, and the county's agricultural heritage involved. So allowing rezoning and development of projects like these are rare or blemish on our fragile Island Park. The thing that makes Island Park so special is the lack of sensitivity, don't sell the soul of Island Park."
Thank you, commissioners, for allowing me to speak. My name is Matthew Ward, I'm here representing the Nature Conservancy, forty-seven-seventy Highway twenty, Island Park. Nature Conservancy is a conservation organization with over fifty-five-year history working across the state. We're also landowners in Fremont County and have owned and operated the Flat Ranch since nineteen ninety-four. Since the mid-nineties, TNC, our partners in the community, have protected and enhanced more than five thousand acres of priority grassland, wetland, and riparian habitat across the upper Henry's Fork Basin, concentrating our efforts on private lands to protect and sustain this vital landscape. In twenty-twenty-two, we purchased the Howard Creek Ranch near Henry's Lake to protect summer range for livestock and critical wildlife habitat. Commenting on local land use planning is very rare for our organization. We respect private property rights. However, we are opposed to the proposed annexation and rezone of this parcel because the application for annexation and rezone is unclear regarding the purpose and intended use. A rezone to a commercial will have negative impacts to our property, and the proposed rezone is in direct conflict with the city's comprehensive plan. To locate commercial use within existing commercial zones, encourage infill development and redevelopment within city limits, to not expand or create new commercial zones, use the development code to direct development away from critical wildlife habitat, wetlands, streams, lake shores, ponds, and wetland corridors, visually sensitive areas in the city, and the area of impact as identified these areas on the natural resources map and the future acquisitions map. Annexing and rezoning this parcel jeopardizes the environmental values, cultural characteristics, scenic view sheds, and community interests of this irreplaceable wildlife habitat and working land. Rezoning sets a dangerous precedent of converting zones that have been established to limit development and maintain working agricultural lands. Annexation and rezoning of this parcel is not in the best interest of the Island Park community, nor is it necessary. Areas within existing commercial zones with lesser environmental and hydralab, hydralab risks, excuse me, are available for development within existing city limits. Economic growth can be achieved without permanently losing critical wildlife habitat, working lands, scenic views, cultural heritage, and the cultural heritage that brings visitors to this region by honoring current zoning destinations. The city of Island Park should take this parcel's location within its designated area of critical environmental concerns and the state's wildlife action plan into consideration and critically evaluate the impacts annexation and rezoning would have on wildlife populations and natural areas as per the city of Island Parks, Island Parks Comprehensive Plan. Maintaining connectivity between geographic areas, winter range, summer range, and transition areas is essential to the long-term viability of wildlife populations, including threatened and endangered species, and the economy that depends upon recreation and tourism income from fish and wildlife. Commercial development of this parcel and the associated infrastructure and human disturbances, thank you for your time.
He has a pace. I live at four-oh-one, three, five, Island Park. Been a full-time resident for about two years, spent a lot of time there throughout my entire life. So, not to repeat a lot of stuff that's been said, I want to thank Burke and Dog to have a lot of information for your situation. As for you, I'm assuming you're a lawyer, so all the guys come on trust, they can say.
Please, keep addressing your house. Okay, thank you.
So, there's much to be considered, so I appreciate the planning and zoning for taking this into consideration. I think there's a whole lot more to be lost than there is to gain, particularly with the lack of transparency that's given divided about what the potential use of this property is. And more so, I'm concerned about the precedent, as you had said, by us sitting here and agreeing to allow this to happen when we know here shortly we're going to be back in this room having another public hearing, it's not going to go so well. So, I do not like the precedent whatsoever, but I'm starting to turn the property over to developers to do whatever they want out of this class. The Henry's Fork, obviously critical to me and critical to you, and we all want to protect it all, but I'm going to speak about one thing that hasn't been spoken about yet, and that is the grizzly bear habitat that's here. That's a major migration path across there. If you have not taken the time to read the Grizzly Bear Protection Recovery Protection Act and/or the annual reports for that act, you should take the time to do so and recognize the vicinity of that property to the area's desert and the northern forests, and take into consideration also that those animals, which is just one of many that we could talk about here tonight for that wildlife, has less than a fifty percent chance of survival currently with resource, with the resource that has been taken away from those animals each year when it's developed or born. So please don't take any more lives away by allowing people to continue to populate and build commercial products. Thank you.
This is Carrie Hinks.
Hi, I'm Carrie Hinks. I actually live down in St. Anthony, but we have enjoyed Island Park for so many years. I remember driving when the old road was here with my grandmother and we'd stay up here as a little kid, so have very fond memories of Island Park area, and even though as Ben mentioned, a lot of development, um, this just seems like a drastic jump, and I'm concerned about it. I just, I was thinking, and I wasn't planning on speaking, so I'm just kind of taking from what other people said tonight. You know, I'm not usually supportive of the Nature Conservancy, but I think you made some good points tonight. There are serious negative impacts to the neighbors if this comes about, this zoning change, and then the big new development. And as Ben mentioned, the precedent of the zone change, that's a really big deal. I just, I just wanted to say, I agreed with what Sunny Jay said about preserve Island Park and change it forever. So that's a big, a big decision you all have to make. Thank you.
Good. So far? Hey, we good?
I want to thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. I want to thank you for all that you do, your public service is greatly appreciated. My name is Leigh Ann Yancey. I'm a fifth-generation Fremont County resident. I live in Chester, and we have property here in Valley View Two. Tonight, I am not here speaking for myself, I'm here representative of the involved property owners of Island Park. That is a diverse group of landowners, lots of different personalities, all kinds of different opinions, but everybody comes together with their love of Island Park. Tonight, I want to present to you a petition that was started by the involved property owners. It's titled Protecting Henry's Lake Flats Area and Island Park from Commercial and High Density Development. I'm going to read it really fast. The city of Island Park is considering a request to annex into the city and rezone the seventy-acre parcel on the west side of Highway twenty. This proposal is being made to enable commercial development within areas now zoned as rural base. Different developers are requesting approval to rezone for development. A four-hundred-and-thirty-one acre parcel located on the east side of the Highway twenty for a private air park community with a private runway with small number of private hanger homes and private hangers on either side of the runway. We are asking for these two projects to be denied. Henry's Lake Flats has been identified by several agencies and/or non-governmental organizations as a priority landscape for conservation. The Bureau of Land Management classifies Henry's Lake as an area of critical environmental concern due to its extraordinary value to wetlands and wildlife. Specifically, the BLM has designated Henry's Lake, including the Henry's Lake Flats, to facilitate the protection of riparian wildlife, recreation, and water quality resources from land disposal, unrestricted rights of way and development, as well as other adverse impact, impacts, and increased opportunities to pursue future protection and acquisition projects to augment the unique resources on public land. Similarly, the Idaho Fish and Game recognizes Henry's Lake Flats as a high priority and Idaho Wetland Conservation Prioritization Plan, and as a conservation focal area in the Idaho State Wildlife Action Plan. The proposed rezone and subsequent developments will have permanent and lasting negative impacts to Fremont County's wildlife. These include habitat loss and fragmentation, disruption, and disturbance. You know, with the last minute that I've got to give you the rest of the petition. When I printed it off last night, to be careful tonight, it had sixteen-hundred-and-fourteen signatures. Tonight, just before I left, it had already grown to nineteen-hundred-and-ten. This petition was started on Sunday evening. This petition was started on Sunday evening, and I'm here on behalf of all of the people who live in Island Park, who can't make a meeting this time of year to be able to come to such an important public hearing about what's going to happen to our area. And I thank you very much for your time.
I wanted to answer a few things. Like I said, I've been on that land a long time. I've never seen the water running across that land. It's the high ground. The stuff down south below is the low ground on the state lands, and the water does cross there, I've seen it. If, I don't know if you know this, but 30 acres of that is already in the city of Island Park, and so it can be developed, 30 houses or whatever. Or if you apply toward or receive R2, you have to do condominiums. My bed, I offered this to nature concerns. I worked with those guys for seven years. They're a warrior, it's Ben Sinne. Sinne, Ben Sinne, wonderful person. I have the highest respect for him. I worked with Dave Westcamp for several years. A lot of respect for him, friends. We could not put it out there. In fact, I've tried several places. If you guys, if you really want this property not to be developed, offer me the same amount of money. I've covered it. Most people won't do that. Most people want to take property rights away because they don't want to see it developed. I can understand that from, from other people's viewpoints, but I don't know how it fits. You know, get together, you have 1,900 names on there. Get together, raise the money, unfollow. Just go ahead and buy it for me. I don't care if you put up, but, but don't try to stop. What I feel like is not only going to be a very beneficial, beautiful project, and I think it'll be beneficial in a lot of ways. You know, you guys, your opinion is your opinion, mine is mine, and I respect your opinion. You can read my own writing. On the migration corridor, we work with Tim Seringer from the Fish and Wildlife, or from the US, the Idaho Fish and Wildlife, Fish and Game. We asked them, give us any studies, show us anything you've got that shows us this is a migration corridor, because I've been there. I'm 68 years old, at least I started riding when I was probably three, and I rode that property for all these years, and I have one time seen an animal. That's the only thing I've ever seen. But Tim had to come back to us because he didn't have any information to show that to us. And it, and it's hard to have a migration corridor when you have a mile of highway that, that has the highest traffic in the entire state of Idaho. Those, those elk don't come across that road because they don't want to get hit. I understand. We have all kinds of elk up there in the north, and I see them, and I tell them, let me state that. And, and you know, I'm on the, the deal with the partner lands, they've asked me to be on it because we've got all these blamping things going in. Those are all free, those are on state lands. Though I leased for 20 years, and they never even said a word to me. They never asked me, they never nothing. They just issued those guys a permit to be on there, and now they're there, they're taking up lots of room, they're, they're creating. I got towns telling like, you cannot believe on that piece that's right there where the, where the river comes into the highway. It's unbelievable. And people chasing my cattle with their four-wheelers, siccing their dogs on those ones. And here we've got witnesses of people siccing their dogs on it. Got the bears coming in up there. Well, they moved out up there on the gravel tip field, the bears moved here. And, and I'd have to disagree with you on the grizzly bear deal. The grizzly bear deal went from 300 to over 1,500 grizzly bears in a period, and they're killing cattle like you cannot beat. Nothing I can do there. You know, I've had the Fish and Game up here, the Fish and Wildlife Service actually checking to see whether there are wolf kills or bear kills, there were bear kills. In one place, seven bear kills within a mile. Anyway, I don't know how to, to answer your deal with the snowfall, the lack of water over the last 15 years. The only person that can fix that is God, and you can't fix it. I mean, that's snowfall, straight, straight snowfall. I'm on a, there's your part of water district, we're getting sued by a search water coalition over water that there is no chance that we can produce. They're suing us now because we're actually seeding clouds so that we have more water up here, and they're trying to shut down our cloud seeding deal, which has brought porting to Idaho, power, almost 61% more water into our basin than we've had in years. I mean, I, I don't know what we can do. We're turning money out of our own pocket to make sure that that cloud seed keeps on happening because we feel like it benefits the whole state of Idaho. That, that's our livelihood as well. So, that's the only thing I can answer for you. I think the farmers and the ranchers are doing their share to make things work together for the state of Idaho. I can't make that bridge work by just running cattle. But, you know, if you guys all wanted to band together and throw whatever in the pot, I'm willing to listen to you. But I appreciate it if you want to take away my rights, my perspective.
And in response from our ends, and I'm not an attorney, I'm a business owner, I'm involved in inside hospitality, and in response to a few things as he said, is that we, transparency is what we want. We, there's a rule and order in how this has to be done, and we were asked not to present a project. This has to be done in the first step, but as we've mentioned, we're more than happy to have whatever needs to be open with public to know what future plans are at the right time and in the right place. But we were in working with the city instructed that this wasn't the right time or right place, but we're happy to answer questions on what that is going to be, and we've tried to address every single one of those concerns that have been raised. We also want to be, we do want to give back to the community, and I know that was raised that there's been something that hasn't happened, and we have the general manager of the hotel here currently, and if there's something that needs to be fixed with the community of what hasn't been given back, we will fix it. That's a commitment that's given to you. And that's the plan as we move forward. We know that this community needs a place to gather, they need a place to hold things, and I think this is a great opportunity, not only for this community, but for the state as a whole, to come and see what a great place this is. And in regards to the employees, we provide employee housing right now. We've used the Old Max Inn for employee housing where we house all employees. We do the same, and our plans with this project would be to apply 100% employee housing outside as well, to not tax any outside housing or put any other burdens on the community. And we are fully staffed. You know, the current project's fully staffed, and, and they've actually had more people apply than what we can actually do for this year. And we know a lot of that comes by the level of service of what we believe we can offer, and, and how you treat your, what you do with developing and tourism, and what we can offer to the community. Another big part that I think we wanted to make sure we understand is that it does matter what's given back. That's, business is what matters, and that's what is going to sustain the growth of Island Park. And the one project up to this part of being the current Sprinkle Suites is giving back as to date 1.6 million in tourism room tax to this community, making combination assessments. And that's a pretty substantial number when you look at the budget of what Island Park City is. And this project of what we'd like to continue to develop and discuss will substantially increase what that is, which will give back to the community, which is going to grow, hopefully allow the community to grow in lots of different ways, which is pretty substantial. And we want to develop a property that fits the fill of Island Park and follows the development code, and whatever is requested, and what needs to happen, and whatever needs to come together with the community, that is the direction of what we want to do. The alternative is, we've had these discussions with Mr. Burton Shaw, is he has to find another use for this property. And, and being someone who loves Island Park, we don't want to see it just be subdivided up into a bunch of whatever people can put cabins on the small parcels of what they'll be forced to do with it, which is what his alternative is going to be with the county. And we feel that our project can still preserve a large portion of this acreage's open space and have a great project on the high ground, which will respect the animals, will respect the wetlands, and will provide a property that's going to respect the community. And that's the goal of what we hope to develop and hope to have the input, and we'll do whatever is necessary for the community at this time. We're thankful for this opportunity we have to be here, thankful for honest feedback, and we hope we can work together to come to a good solution.
For comments or questions, we will close our three hearings.
All right. Without any more questions, we'll go ahead and close our three hearings. So, first we will close Comp 23-01. The hearing is now closed. Next, we will close Public Hearing Annex 23-02. Close. Next, we'll be closing Rezon 23-01. Close. Guess we now will discuss, uh...
Sorry, Tim. Can I ask you a question?
I was going to start down here, Tim. I'm new at this, and I hope everyone can appreciate that. I do respect the property, property rights of the Burton Shaws and their desire to make their property equal to the highest and best use possible. Our current comprehensive plan for the City of Island Park says, do not expand or create new commercial zones unless a landowner developer can demonstrate an actual need for additional commercial zoning. And that's, I'm struggling with that because unless we know what the project is, I don't know how we can make that appropriate determination. So, so we're being asked to annex it into the city and then change the zoning to commercials to allow the applicant to do something that we don't know what they're going to do. So, the reason that we don't is, what we do is we ask these to consider, quote unquote, words across the situation, right? Because let's say you were to allow this rezon, and then Mr. Burton Shaw sold the, the property to a different developer, he came in and built one. It's a bait and switch, you know, that, that's one thing that can... I was going to say something else, I forgot what it was. No. What? And this, and this, this application is for annexation zones, right? It's, it's not for any particular project, right? You have to just think about it as commercial zoning or it's residence zoning without any particular project. That confuse you more?
Yeah, I think probably when I looked at the long-term, our zoning map here, you know, we have pockets of commercial that it seems like could be pursued, has been stated previously, of a potential commercial belt. So, I think that's current, struggling, trying to understand the need for more commercial than not commercial. If I understand as far as maybe the property rights, those could be developed, and I, I do appreciate trying to get a, you know, the best vision you guys can just put forward on, but I also, it is available underneath rural base, which does have some commercial, you know, stipulations in that belt. And so, I'm not sure, I feel like I'm wanting to, you know, have a, have a little piece on the flat or anywhere. I'm trying to prevent that going forward of having that be a commercial, when we have commercial. And we might have other areas that, you know, better fit expansion of commercial if I hear the public input about it. I really, in all the written, and I really like the written we have, is it allows me to sit down, really think about it, dissect the comments. I tried to take notes throughout this, but one thing I really have not captured was a big demand from the public of saying we need more commercial. And a lot in Tom, Tom, all the comments, I didn't get any underlying theme coming out saying, hey, we think we need more commercial in the City of Island Park. And so, you know, when we look at our comprehensive plan, a lot of that needs to speak to what the public wants, and I didn't hear them speak to that need.
So, I guess I would kind of concur with, with Tracy as well, you know, in, in that, you know, obviously, you know, the, the, the property rights of the landowner are a big deal, but, you know, the reasons why we have zoning and, and even building codes, you know, beyond that are to protect the integrity of, of, you know, the area and the property rights of those around that property. And so, I guess the only thing I would say is property rights don't necessarily end with, you know, the property itself. They also have to, you know, include the property rights of those around that property. So, that's kind of the only thing that I really wanted to, to expand.
Although I guess I'll, I'm in with sort of what I'm kind of thinking here, and I would agree with these guys. A lot of what we have to do doesn't necessarily come down, I'm sorry, a lot of what we have to do doesn't necessarily come down to, you know, have a deal or anything, we're come up down by our comprehensive plan. And that's a, if you don't know, that's a document that we put together, well, before we were here, but that sort of guides how we look at the, and this is a document that was created by the community, so we believe that it reflects community input and community involvement in development. And it was brought to my attention, this is the actual first time we have been, as long as this code has been there, been believing that it has been asked to change, which makes me believe that it's been functioning fairly well so far. And with that, we don't feel primary things under the economic development is focused more on our existing commercial rather than add more. So, that would be, I'm thinking right now, this current comprehensive plan, it really seems to be...
Property is currently zoned rural base, rural base. And that zone is not intended to accommodate non-agricultural development. However, in my research, other uses such as subdivisions, campgrounds, RV parks could be developed with a Class 2 permit, which would require, if, if this is not annexed, that would require going to the county to receive those, that permit. So even though it's zoned for agricultural use, just so the public understands there are other uses that can be developed under that particular zone.
Okay, well, it's less like we are on similar pages as commissioners. I don't know if Ron capable of chiming in?
Yeah, he can. Ron, do you want to chime in?
I sure do.
Hang on.
Um, so I have something prepared that...
Hey, hang on, nobody can hear you yet.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Okay, I don't know if this will work, so talk and we'll see.
Hey, is it working?
Can you guys hear him or no? Yeah, it's on.
Okay.
Hang on, hang on, hang on, hang on. Okay. I don't know if this is going to work, we'll try it.
Okay, we'll try it. I apologize for not being there. I am sitting in the sun right now, so I apologize for all of you who aren't, and I know what kind of day you're having and how stressful the hearings are.
Yes, um, that's as loud as it's going to be. It's like sitting, talk, Ron.
Okay. So tell me to stop if you can't hear me, okay? I've, I've reviewed the letters and submitted, that have been submitted, and I listened to all of the testimony tonight. I have many concerns about this request, and the testimony given also brings others to mind. I don't believe the proposal meets several of the policies laid out in the comprehensive plan, which has already been mentioned by most of the commissioners. These policies are the language encouraging infill development within the city limits, locating commercial and existing commercial zones. The request is not direct development away from critical wildlife habitat or corridors, wetlands, streams, lakeshores, ponds, and wetland corridors, or visually sensitive areas as our comp plan suggests. Additionally, the proposal is well beyond where the gates for the closure of Highway 20 are located, and these gates are located at points where the visibility and winter storms begins and, begins impassable. This issue will be very hard to address considering the danger in past year's accidents because of low visibility roadway. For these reasons, I don't believe the request meets the comprehensive plan policy on transportation. Uh, concern on the change of the comprehensive plan map is that while the map and the comp plan may be guiding documents, they also shed light on what the community wanted when it was adopted in 2014. I'm aware that many people believe there was a protection on the flats from the development, which doesn't exist outside of the language in the plan on, on actual development considerations as I mentioned above. It's important to also note that this property is currently zoned in both the city and the county, well, part of it is zoned in the city and the other part is zoned in the kitty, in the county for uses including residential purposes. In the county, zoning many more uses are allowed than the residential designation in the city. The developer has a right by state law to develop within the perimeters, parameters of the existing zoning, which in both cases is consistent with the comprehensive plan. The requirements of such development would need to meet specific items for development that require meeting the above mentioned items. That is, you know, the wildlife corridors, water shed table, those are all items that if they had them, they should have included those in the presentation tonight. It would also need to show infrastructure, including how they're going to get sewer or water to the proposed property, as well as the long-term effect on the highway. I don't believe that the property owner has shown a reason to change the comprehensive plan map outside of wanting to develop, which they can do within the current zoning. They have a property right to develop based on the zones that they have. There should be, there should be a true benefit to the community prior to a random change to the plan in place. My concern about changing the comp map is that none of this has been covered in a way that satisfies my concerns. A change to the comp map sets precedent for additional comp map changes and the resulting zoning requests. Once the zoning is set, except in very few instances, it cannot be reversed. In this case, considering all the surrounding zoning, it could even appear to be a spot zone. While the developer may be ready to move forward, I do not believe the community or especially the comprehensive plan is ready for a change at this time. It's my opinion that this request should be denied for the comprehensive plan map change and the city zoning request change to commercial. I want to stress that I believe the future annexation to the city will protect and provide for Island Park community much better than if it remains in the county. Annexation to the city provides the citizens of the community to readily receive notification of changes, the people representing them are also from the community, and the political positions or residents of the city. Additionally, meetings are held locally so citizens can attend meetings without driving over 100 miles to meet and to have direct access to the people representing the community. Future input on lands would be held on the community note, not 50 miles away. The last thing I want to say is I think it's really essential that the public understands that the reason a development presentation is not allowed tonight is because the comprehensive plan change and zoning is not just limited to what this developer plans. And I know that's what Trey, Kyle was trying to say. To do the property is, if the property is changed or if it changes hands, if the developer decides not to do what he planned, there's nothing after the change of a, to a commercial zone that we can do that to limit it and change the zoning back. So once it's a commercial zone, it remains a commercial zone, and however the land is developed is based on that zone. So that's my statement, I just, I don't support the change at this time.
Thanks, Ron.
Yep.
Thank you, Ron.
You're welcome.
Would anybody like to make a motion? Is there anyone here that would like to make a motion?
I guess all of them.
Um, to move this item to the mobile. So, based on, sir?
So, based on conflicts with the population policy, uh, two from our comprehensive plan, um, uh, encourage, basically encourage to infill development and redevelopment within the city limits, economic development, uh, you know, uh, the development policy from our comprehensive plan, you know, the comprehensive, the comprehensive plan really doesn't, currently, you know, in its current state, uh, does not fit the presented items tonight. Unless the landowner or the developer can demonstrate, uh, an actual need for an addition to our commercial zoning, you know, we have, we have current areas available, there are current properties, you know, currently available, uh, in the commercial zone. Uh, and for that reason, uh, I, uh, make a motion that we deny this application, uh, to change our comp plan map, uh, at the time. I re, I recommend that the, the city can, the city council, uh, can, uh, take a look at this and, um, demonstrate an act, or, excuse me, that the city council can actually take a look at this and, um, you know, but, you know, for, for our standpoint as the, as the, the Planning and Zoning Commission, you know, for those reasons, that's, that's, you know, our standpoint, or at least my standpoint. Okay, so, so based on the reasoning that the, that the current, uh, you know, the, the current comprehensive plan does not align, I recommend that, uh, you know, recommend denial for that reason. Do the city council like to recommend for denial? Most I guess to deny.
Oh, sorry. Ron? I can't hear you, Ron, unmute yourself.
Yes.
You said yes.
I heard it.
Go ahead, say it again.
Yes.
Well, I'd like to make the motion on Annex 23-02, Section 13, Tier B14, RDB 43, Burton Shaw Land and Kettle Incorporated, uh, to the city council, uh, to deny based upon there was no change in the comp plan or the entity.
I'll second it.
Ron says he seconds it.
Yes.
Yes.
Um, on the Rezone 23-01, Section 13, Tier B14, RDB 43, Burton Shaw Land and Kettle Incorporated, I would like to propose to the city council, um, a recommendation of deny based upon, uh, there was no change in the comp plan, so it does not support rezone of commercial.
Ron?
Aye.
Where, find your... That? In, in the meeting? Take the motion? Aye.
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 Ron?
Aye.
Good for doing this. Yep. Thanks everybody for joining. Happy to help.
Thanks, Angie.
Yep, you bet. Anytime.
Available for all of us who are out of town, we really appreciate it.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Thank you very much for making us available for all of us who are out of town, we really appreciate it.
Yep, anytime, no worries.
Yes, thank you, Angie, we appreciate it.
Yep, anytime, no worries. Good night, everybody. Are you sticking around?
You
Thank you for joining us today.